Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us for members of the public and able to attend council meetings. We can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is nearly 10:25 a.m. We have nine members present, one shy of a quorum, so we can't conduct business quite yet. But this being Friday, as is customary, we sometimes have special presentations and introductions. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me recognize Council Member Cardenas for the introduction of a special guest in council chambers.
Today was Bring Your Son to Work Day, and as a matter of fact, in the parking lot downstairs, I have my son Andres with me today. He's the second of my two young boys. And interestingly enough, I guess it's Bring Your Son to Work Day because the mayor was in the parking lot downstairs, and he had his son Jackson with him, too. So if they get bored, I think they'll probably call each other up over the phone and say, "What are you doing, City Hall? I'm bored." Well, I just want to say welcome to Andres.
Want to say hello?
Hello.
So, and I also understand Ms. Hahn, you have a presentation? Are we ready yet? Ms. Hahn.
I bet he's so far away.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues. Excuse my laryngitis this morning. And you've heard me talk about it a lot since the freak storm hovered over the community of Watts a week ago. And you might have thought we even gave them enough thanks at our city council meeting in Watts last Wednesday night. But I am of the opinion that we cannot thank our city employees enough, that we cannot give them praise enough. We know that it's their job and they're supposed to do it, but I've got to tell you, I don't think anyone was prepared for a hailstorm in Watts. So I don't know if that was on anybody's job's description when they signed up with the city of Los Angeles. But I wanted to take this opportunity on the day before Thanksgiving to really, from the bottom of my heart, give thanks to who I think are the greatest city employees in the country that work for any city. And I was fortunate enough to really be shoulder to shoulder with them in the rain, in the hail, in the snow. And the people that I'm going to honor this morning, in my opinion, went beyond their normal jobs, went above their duties, and really responded to a community that suffered an incredible tragedy. And it was a community that frankly could least afford to have that kind of tragedy hit their homes a week before Thanksgiving. Many of these people, as you've heard, lost a lot. They lost their carpeting, they lost their mattresses, they lost clothes, they lost food. They faced months of repair to rebuild their lives. But I was so grateful and I was so proud of our city employees in the way they responded to something that I don't think really we've ever seen before in the history of this city, and that was a flash flood hailstorm in the community of Watts. So I'm going to bring them up sort of group by group. The first group I want to bring up is the fine men from the Los Angeles Fire Department stations 64 and 65 in Watts. Battalion Chief Mike Rhodes is here, you want to come on up? And we have other captains and firefighters from the Watts station. Come on up and stand behind me. You know, that night, I left City Hall at about 5:00, and I was driving to San Pedro for a meeting. And I went on the Harbor freeway, it took me an hour and 40 minutes to get to San Pedro, but I went through the hail and I went through the rain, and I thought, well, this is a pretty bad storm. But after my second meeting that night, my Watts person, Myron Cotton, called me on the phone, she says, "I think you better get back to Watts. You are not going to believe this." So I drove, really not knowing what I was going to see, arrived at Compton Boulevard about 112th, and it was a disaster. There were 100 cars where people had fled their cars for their life. They were floating down the street that looked like sort of a carnival with bumper cars. They were on the sidewalks, they were crashed into each other, and naturally, at that point, they couldn't start. So we had streets, besides everything else, that were impassable for our rescue workers because of these cars. The first city employees I saw on the scene that night was our fire department. They were there, they were in the streets, they were working to help push cars out of the way. Battalion Chief Rhodes, well, actually, Chief Matry called me on my cellphone, and, oh, is it Chief Matry? Chief Matry, you're here. And I said, "I need help, this is a disaster." And he said, "The battalion chief was somewhere else, and they were working to help set up a Red Cross shelter." And I said, "I think they need to be closer over here at Compton 112th." And he said, "I'll send them right there." And so that was a sight for sore eyes when the battalion chief drove up and said, "What can we do to help?" So, on behalf of, again, a very grateful councilwoman, a very grateful city, and really a grateful, grateful group of people who found themselves literally fearing for their lives in the middle of the night because of that flash flood. Thank you so much. I know you guys do this all the time, but it was really great for me to be able to see you on the spot, the first group on the spot. So congratulations, Chief. Do you want to say something?
Certainly, it's my appreciation to accept this on behalf of the companies, and we'll pass that on to them. And we give the council people helmets and brush jackets. Now, we're going to have to give you turnout boots if you're going to come waiting out in the water for us, but it's certainly, I think, that partnership that we appreciate. And Janice was very kind. Actually, she told me, "You better get the firefighters over here." So it was a collaboration that worked out best for the public in the end and something that we'll continue to improve on. So I do appreciate certainly the recognition, and I know the firefighters do a great job out there for us, day in and day out, and we appreciate everything that they do. Thank you very much.
Let's take a quick picture of the guys around. I know you do all the time, do you ever see anything like that? No, see? Never.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just, I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for your extraordinary work to our community and such a, I guess you could call it a freak incident of having that kind of hail and the need for snowplows. It just dawned on me right now that I was in Chicago a few months ago, and I was kind of like, not bragging, but kind of like telling the mayor, you know, that we don't need snowplows. of like, not bragging, but kind of like telling the mayor, you know, that we don't need snowplows in Los Angeles, kind of rubbing it in.
Really?
But I guess I got to call him and eat crow now because you never know. You never know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next group, who wasn't there right away, but when I called my brother, I said, "Mayor, this is bad. We need help." The next person on the spot really was from the Los Angeles Police Department, Southeast Division. Is Captain Hara here? Come on over, Captain Hara. And apparently, Captain Nancy Lauer actually came from home. And she showed up in her jeans and her, she had the right shoes on. I ruined my shoes that night. And she realized right away, she realized right away that we had a situation on our hands. We had an unbelievable disaster that was, could have kept going and gotten worse. And she was able, with you, to radio for other units from the city to come into that community that night. And it was so quick and so fast. And if you could have seen her standing out in the middle of the street, she, too, was helping to push cars off the side into direct traffic and do whatever she could. And she said she would stay there until she made sure the situation was under control. So for all you do, Captain Hara, and that community, that community loves you very much. But that night particularly, I really am grateful for the way the department responded so quickly. So again, on behalf of a very grateful community of Watts and a very grateful councilwoman, thank you, Captain Hara.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to say something? Okay, let's take a picture.
Thank you, councilwoman. Appreciate it. On behalf of the men and women of Southeast Division, we're very honored to receive this recognition. But I think it goes towards the commitment that the men and women have on a daily basis in serving the southeast area. That night was unique and probably will never see it again, but the officers themselves, we had cars, police cars, that were, got affected by the rain, by the hail itself. Computers were going belly up. They had committee members walk on top of the cars just so that they can get from one location to the next. We had as many officers that we can deploy immediately out there still driving through all that torrential rain and everything. So thank you very much for the recognition and the minimum of southeast. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Captain Hara. Thank you. The next group I want to honor is our Bureau of Street Services. Bill Robertson, get on up here. And do you have some of your crews here that want to come stand, too? I'm sorry about my voice. Isn't it awful? I think it happened at the Simon and Garfunkel concert, where I knew every word to every song and I sang it. Well, there I was, standing in the middle of the street, and Bill Robertson calls me on my cellphone. And I said, "Bill, it's a mess. You should see the debris." Even though our storm drains had been cleaned out only a month before, the debris that this flood was bringing onto our streets and onto the sidewalks was unbelievable. And he said the magic words. He said, "We will have our crews out there tonight." And they came out that night and began clearing the streets of this incredible debris that had come with this flood into the streets of Watts. And then they were out there the very next morning, first thing, clearing the roads, which again is very impressive since we didn't have any snowplows. But they literally had to begin clearing the snow. There was one street where the residents could not back out of their driveways. Their cars were literally under snow and they had to begin digging people out of their homes so that they could get out and go about their lives. And then additionally, the very next weekend after the storm, the lot cleaning crews drove the community of Watts, street by street by street. And we had told people, "If you want to just put out on the curb, your wet carpeting, what was damaged in your garage, mattresses, whatever you know you want to throw away, but you know it's not going to fit in your regular container, if you'll just put it out on your curb, we will pick it up." And they did that. Again, they drove street by street by street. And if anybody got it, I guess halfway out to their curb, you guys picked it up. And you've continued to do that. You said you would do that on the next Saturday and you did. And again, I know you guys do a great job all the time. This city looks like it does because of you and your crews, the way you keep our streets clean, our lots clean. But I got to tell you, again, I was so impressed and I was so grateful. And I'll tell you what, the community of Watts will never forget that we really gave them curbside pickup for their damaged goods in that flood. And for that, I am really grateful and I appreciate all the time that you guys worked beyond your regular day. So thank you very much, Bill Robertson. You're a prince. You really are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to say something?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn. On behalf of the Bureau of Street Services and the great, great employees that I have, they are really the ones that respond every day. They're out there, doesn't matter what the weather is. If there's a need, we're there and we're just glad that we could help the community. And we would like to thank the community because although our people are out there, the community was there helping us, too. And they did a great job assisting us in getting that stuff picked up and we really appreciate it.
But you never saw anything like it, did you?
No.
Okay, one picture. Gather round. Thank you very much. Okay, the Department of Building and Safety. Building and Safety, wow. Grace Harper, Deputy Superintendent, Dave Keim, and I believe Andrew Adelman is out for the holidays, so he won't be here. You know, the first thing we had to do in this tragedy was we had to assess the damage that these homes had suffered. If we were going to bring any kind of state funding or federal funding or even in our city to try to help these residents, we had to find out what happened to who and how bad. Building and Safety responded, first of all, for the people who were calling 311. People called 311 and said, "My house has been damaged." Building and Safety took their name and address, went out there, assessed the damage. But additionally, this is the above and beyond, they went out, they started that weekend, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, probably beyond. These guys went door to door, door to door, street by street in the community of Watts, knocked on the doors and said, "We're here. Did you suffer damage? Let us assess it." And began to compile the incredible list of peoples whose homes were damaged, which we're now using to try to help these people rebuild their lives. But again, that was the thing that I think meant the most to that community. Because, you know, still, a lot of people don't know where to call. As much as we talk about 311 all the time, a lot of people don't know about it. A lot of people just were absolutely traumatized, traumatized by what happened to them the night before. They did not know what to do. And these guys, again, door to door, started early in the morning and went till dark. And for that, I am truly, truly grateful. Grace and Dave, you guys were just absolutely terrific. And you've helped so much in this once-in-100-years event that I will never forget what you did and I think that community won't either. Thank you. Congratulations very much.
Ray's going to say something.
Okay. Great, okay.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, Councilmember Hahn. And the department is honored to receive this recognition. My general manager, Andrew Adelman, is not here to receive this recognition in person. However, he asked me to express his utmost appreciation for all our staffs for their efforts and efficiency in doing damage assessment for 500 buildings within 48 hours after the declaration of local disaster. And lastly, he wants to express that the Department of Building and Safety is proud to be part of the city's team to provide assistance and relief to the victims of the local disaster. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go, someone take a picture? Take a pause. Thank you. I think you were trying to sell something when you went door to door. Okay, the Community Development Department, our general manager, Cliff Graves, Gloria Stevenson-Clark, Manette Milner. This was great. This was a great, great partnership. Our Community Development Department actually began working with the Watts Neighborhood Council to help them set up a relief center at the Bradley-Milken Community Center, which is a city facility. And this was, again, we talked about it at the council meeting, but this Watts Neighborhood Council said, they even thought the city wasn't moving fast enough. And they said, "We need to get clothes, we need to get blankets, we need to get toys, we need to get shoes." And that's where they contacted Steve Harvey at The Beat and he got his listeners to begin donating all those items plus money to the Relief Fund for Watts. And you really worked with them to help them set up. It was amazing. I was there that one morning. It was incredible, the amount of donations that were given to the people in Watts immediately. So thank you for working with one of our neighborhood councils to help them set up this relief fund. It was absolutely a success. Thank you so much and congratulations from the City of Los Angeles. Cliff, did you want to say something?
Sure. You know, it's always nice when a partnership works. As the councilwoman said, we have an ongoing relationship with the Bradley-Milken Center and also having the reputation for being able to pull funds from unusual sources. So we're very pleased to have been able to utilize that center in Watts. And also wanted to thank our friends at the State Department of Community Services, which we were able to get $100,000 from, which is later on your agenda, to add to the effort. So again, it's nice when it works and it worked this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bureau of Sanitation, come on down. We have Jim Langley, interim director. We have Richard Miles, and we have Andy Morales. We have the wastewater collection workers. Bureau of Sanitation, last Saturday, SEIU Local 347, which represents more than 30 Bureau of Sanitation truck drivers and mechanics, members of LIUNA Local 777, which represents four Bureau of Sanitation supervisors, and the Bureau of Sanitation South Collection District joined together, and listen to this, volunteered, volunteered their time to remove bulky items last Saturday from the community of Watts. At one point, I heard there was a trouble because we weren't sure that was legal for you to volunteer. That was bureaucracy at its worst. But you all volunteered your time to do a major cleanup Saturday in that community of things that were still left over. And for that, again, I am truly grateful. The community is truly grateful. And you represent really the best and the brightest of city employees in the City of Los Angeles. So congratulations very much to the Bureau of Sanitation. Do you want to say something? And yeah, let me just say also, the wastewater collection workers, they are the ones that went out immediately and began pumping the water and trying to get the water out from that community so all the other cleanup activities could take place. So you guys really were on the spot immediately and did a fine, fine job. Really, that was probably one of the biggest jobs. And it was then, it was allowed the rest of cleanup to take place. So thank you for the wastewater collection workers. You guys are awesome.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hahn. We really appreciate this recognition. And I want to mention that I appreciate as well the people that are here today, but we have a lot that are out in the field today, cleaning sewers, cleaning catch basins and storm drains, they're picking up refuse and recyclables. So we have a lot of people that were participating in this effort. We really do appreciate the recognition and we will make sure everybody that was involved in this gets a special recognition as well. Thank you.
And I understand it was your idea to organize this.
Yes, it was. I would like to thank all the employees that were involved in this and for here accepting this recognition on their behalf. Some of them couldn't make it, but like I said earlier, I want to thank everybody that participated in this event. Thank you.
And you know, again, this community, over the years, historically has sort of felt neglected and forgotten and that nobody really cares about them. So the fact that you agreed to take a day and volunteer to help clean up their neighborhood, their lives, will go a long way for that community to know that people do care and people do respond when there is a need. You made me so proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Burton from the Emergency Preparedness Department, come on down. Is this the last one? You know, you guys have probably all been through emergencies and disasters. This was kind of my first district disaster. So I learned a lot, but I will say that our Emergency Preparedness Department is an excellent department. And Ellis Stanley is out of town and was also out of town the day after. And Anna stepped in and I remember, I was a little harsh with you. I'm like, "You've been gone, you don't even know what's going on. Where's Ellis?" And you calmed me down and you said, "No, I probably know more about this than anybody." And you calmly walked me through all the steps that we needed to do as a city to make sure that we declared a disaster and we got the mayor to do that, and then everything we needed to do subsequently to make sure that all our departments were coordinated and responded in an emergency. I really respect you. I enjoyed watching you through that disaster. You were calm, you were cool, and you made me completely trust your ability to handle a disaster in this city. So thank you very much and to the whole department. This is only going to happen once every 100 years. That's what they said. So this storm will never happen again, but thank you so much. Thank you all. Do you want to say something?
Certainly. Again, we do look for all disasters. One of our sayings that we've had for years is expect the unexpected. And this certainly was something that we didn't expect, three feet of hail in the Watts area. But as we know, we do need to prepare for any disaster. And we will continue to do that, working with all the departments and the commissions and the neighborhood and the community. One of the community-based organizations that I do have to recognize is through Emergency Network Los Angeles, Catholic charities came forward with $10,000 worth of donated groceries. That was 3,700 bags that they handed out that week. So we would like to thank them very much. And I appreciate the comments and the kind words and so, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. You know, let me take a real quick picture. Wendy Anse couldn't be here today, but I just didn't want to be remiss and thank DWP because DWP, obviously, the power was out for a majority of those customers. DWP put 30 crews in emergency. Randy's here. Okay, Randy, come here. They responded quickly. They knew how important it was to get the power back on. Many of those residents were without power for 24 hours, but it was great. We were having a press conference on this one street with the mayor, congresspeople. We were inside a home and the lights came back on with Channel 7 right there filming it. So I want to thank DWP for really showing the whole world that you could get the lights back on in a timely manner. So please tell Wendy thank you for all her help. Do you want to say something?
Well, I thank you, councilwoman, on behalf of all of the DWP employees that were involved. If we were to bring in all of the employees that were involved, we would fill this hall. That's how many people were active. And this disaster really tested our resources. We were not prepared for a flood in that area. And while it was not a lot of customers out of service, the amount of damage was significant and those crews... And those crews worked around the clock to get those residential customers and businesses back up. Thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you, councilmembers, for indulging me in honoring these city departments. I appreciate it. And I will give thanks tomorrow for all of you and for all of our city employees in Los Angeles. They're the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hahn. Let's give everybody a big hand for all their hard work. Next, I'd like to recognize the President of the City Council, Mr. Alex Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to remind everybody that there was a big football game in town just this last Saturday. And although I didn't go to either university, nonetheless, it was a great event in Los Angeles. And I saw Councilmember Parks there, Councilmember Carrdenas there, saw Zev Yaroslavsky there. Who else was there? The one person that I heard was there that I didn't see was Councilmember Smith. So, Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, you got to come up here. You suited up. You were on the field. Here was the one in the picture standing over, the UCLA Bruin in the end zone. That was just a cheap trick to get him up here. Colleagues, this is the birthday boy today. He's 28 years old today. And on behalf of all of your colleagues and the mayor, I want to wish you a very, very happy birthday. Your staff made us part of the ploy here. We have a little surprise for you. And we're going to ask you for a speech on your birthday, the day before Thanksgiving 2003. Greg Smith. Got the fire chief stepped away.
Well, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Greg. Happy birthday to you. Mr. Smith, before you speak, Mr. Zein had pushed his button.
Actually, that's his cake. If you look at it, it's wrong. It's got his name on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'd pushed my button when Councilmember Hahn was recognizing our wonderful city employees. I was going to ask when we're going to be purchasing snowplows for the City of Los Angeles. But since that's passed, I want to offer my congratulations to you. I know that not only your love for the city and your wife's love for the city and the dedication you have for the city as a council member, but your also love for the people of Los Angeles and serving in the other capacity, protecting and serving. So, I know you're approaching that double AARP. You're past the double AARP membership. You and I are both members of the double AARP. AARP, American Association of Retired Persons. And I know that many of our colleagues will be joining us soon if they haven't already reached that level of success in their life. But congratulations on another wonderful year. The day before Thanksgiving, you have your birthday. And thanks to have you as a good friend, a good partner. And bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, Mr. Zein is younger than I am. But on that incident in Galpin Ford, I was the first guy on the pile. Anyway, thank you very much. My mother used to say, when I was born, I was actually born on Thanksgiving Day, and she called me her little turkey. Now, when I was...
Now, he's a big turkey.
When I was young, that was really cute. But nowadays, turkey means something different. And I'm not so sure that's a nice little story. But anyway, thank you all for recognizing. And I know this is just a lobby, a ploy to keep the council here till we can get a quorum. But I appreciate the thought and the cake and everything. Appreciate my staff, my wife, Chris, who is here, also a city employee, came down and should be working instead of... She's down here goofing off instead of working. Don't tell the mayor, please. Thank you for all being here. And you know, you guys got to be here, but the staff and everybody, thank you for the thought. And Alex, you know, you're getting close to this too, aren't you? You're over 30 now. You're getting old, man. We've registered him for AARP. Anyway, thank you very much. It's a very nice thought. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, before you get away, I have a complete history of your background I'd like to read for the record. No, I just want to say, members, Greg Smith is one of the great people of City Hall because he really has the knowledge of this city. He has the passion for his district and the valley and all the city. And I'm just proud to be a colleague to you, Greg, as someone who's worked alongside of you over the years. You truly have a wonderful wife, who has done a great job for the mayor's office over the years. But you especially, Greg. And I also could tell, because it's usually the guy who is really not sure of himself, that doesn't go to the pile first. You were there first because you're sure of yourself all the time in every step you make. Happy birthday. And I think it's wonderful what your mother said about you. But we'll only tell that here. Congratulations. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
If I recognize Mr. Zein, let me just announce, colleagues, if you haven't figured it out yet, we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. We have two members who were previously excused today. They're traveling and out of town. Two members who are sick. And we don't want them to come into chambers. And two members who are excused to arrive at 11:30. So, it's up to the will of the body here as to what to do. We've checked with the clerk and the city attorney. There's nothing on today's agenda that is critical in nature, nothing that can't wait till next Tuesday. So, our options are to wait if and when a 10th member arrives or to adjourn and carry items over to Tuesday.
I would recommend, with the indulgence of my colleagues, since it's only a half hour and we've got 70-plus items on the agenda today, which means Tuesday, we'll have maybe 160 items and be here till 4:00 in the afternoon. If we could take a half-hour break and then come back, and if they're here at 11:30. If not, then we adjourn 11:30. I think for the 73 items, because I'd hate to come back Tuesday and have 160 items to go through. But we want to take a break for a half-hour and then do that.
I second that, if that's a motion.
Point of order. I don't know if we can try it at 11:15. I have a scheduled flight. I have to leave about 12:30. So, the later we meet, the longer...
I didn't know that anybody else was leaving.
Just to let everyone else know, I've checked, and there's no cards submitted on any items except for one item in my district. And that's only to support the action of the underlying Plumb Report. So, there, at least at present, in terms of public comment, seems not to be a number of items that will be called special. So, the sooner we can meet, the better.
We'd lose the quorum anyway.
No, no, no. We could do it in fast...
Point of order.
11:15, 11:20?
Mr. Carrdenas and Mr. Smith?
I have a point of order. Can we legally do that if we don't have a quorum here to adjourn or recess?
No, we never started. To recess, not adjourn, but to recess, can we legally?
We can't really take an action.
Well, we have, there's no recess because we officially haven't started meeting.
We would just have to informally try to come back at 11:15, 11:20.
But if your departure then would break the quorum, so...
But not until 12:30.
Okay, so you were right. So, she's working.
Well, I don't want to hang up a flight.
No, no, no.
But if we could do that, if we could say 11:30, if they're not here by 11:30, if they are here at 11:30, and then we get, we can get done, and then we...
Mr. Carrdenas?
I know I'm a rookie here, and this is my first pre-Thanksgiving meeting day on the council or what have you. But I'm in favor of adjourned, and especially since Ms. Msikowski just pointed out that there are no public cards that have been filled out. And I recognize the fact that you're talking about, Mr. Zein, that there's 70 items. But that doesn't mean that all 70, we don't even know if it's five or six of those that will be called special come next Tuesday anyway.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you. And, Mr. Padilla, can we ask the clerk to call the two members who were expected 11:30 and see if their ETA is actually at 11:30? I have constituents who've come down not to speak. And I guarantee you, members, I won't speak on any issue. But they wanted to see it passed because they came down and fought for something and took time out of their busy day, as could have happened to any one of your constituents. So, if the clerk could call and see if there's a true fact...
Mr. Labange, let me give you an update. We have called both members, and they have both said they will try but have not made commitments as to what time they can arrive. They will try to be here as soon as possible.
Did they tell you what their 10:20 was?
No, they just said as soon as possible.
Right. Well, that's what I was trying to help you, Dennis, to understand this.
And we want to welcome the residents of the 4th district who have come to observe a very unique day in city council.
I think 11:30. And then we could, this could be a fast meeting.
If we keep talking, it's going to be 11:30.
I'll keep talking. I'll keep talking. I'll keep talking.
Mr. Parks. There's a great picture at the Coliseum on Saturday.
You know, I would recommend that we adjourn because I don't see that we're going to get much business done. And it's not for sure people are going to be here at 11:30. And if Ms. Msikowski has a flight... I mean, she could be here. But I mean, if she's got to leave shortly after that, you have, at best, a window of 40 to 50 minutes. And I have a tree. I got a tree in the 8th district we're going to go watch. Anybody that's in the area, we got a 100-foot tree that just got delivered to the 8th district at the corner of Crenshaw and Marlton. They'll erect it today and start decorating it. So, come by and see. It's 100 feet.
Mr. President, point of order to try to resolve this. Among the members who are here, I think the first motion was... That's not official motion. The general sense was to try to come back at 11:30. Why don't we just vote on that and see if that's the majority?
Okay. Is there any objection to that? Trying to reconvene at 11:30? And if you do not have a quorum at that time, then we will adjourn. And matters will carry over till Tuesday. Is there any objection?
Objection.
One objection?
I'd rather we adjourn now.
Overruled.
11:30.
So, let's try to get it at 11:30, folks.
11:30.
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to council chambers. It's 11:30 a.m. Let me recognize Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President.